Okay, we're gonna get started. So the time is now 7:06 PM. Good evening and welcome to, back to the November 13th, 2025 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Vice Chairman for this evening. This meeting is being interpreted live in Spanish. To listen to the Spanish interpretation, please call 508-924-5155. Once again, the number is 508-924-5155. We invite you to focus on the screen for the Spanish version of this announcement.
Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al 508-924-5155.
Alright, so for anyone unable to join us live, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on the PTCBS YouTube channel. Lastly, for recording purposes, the Vice Chairman reminds all Board members to ensure that their microphones are turned on when speaking. Board Member Goanz McCants, please lead us in the Board Prayer.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Woodridge, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ajikay.
Present.
Dr. Andiful.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Mrs. Brown. Ms. Goanz McCants.
Present.
Dr. Moss. Ms. Mrs. Olivo.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Jackson. There are seven. Present.
Alright, thank you so much. We have a quorum present. We're gonna move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. So if there is no objection to the November 13th, 2025 meeting agenda, it will be adopted. There being no objection, the November 13th, 2025 meeting agenda is adopted as amended. We're gonna move on to any other corrections to the October 23rd, 2025 closed session summary, October 23rd, 2025 Board Business Meeting, the November 6th, 2025 closed session summary. There being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. I'd like to recognize now for our news break and PGCPs Spotlight, Beyond the Bail, Hot Meals Fuel, After School Success for the PGCPs Spotlight. Thank you so much.
In these times, we wanna make sure that we bridge the gap between after school and when they go home. And so this program here, it affords just our students in general, just another meal, and it's hot, and we know that they enjoy those more.
Some other meals that we provide for the students include vegetables, milk, meat, fruit. I mean, we see students now that wasn't eating at first, that are eating every day in here now since it's the hot supper food.
For the principal who's wondering, oh, is this more work for my staff? Food Nutrition Service staff will come in, you know, we can discuss any, any, any barriers that you feel like you may have. Our food service supervisors, they'll come in, they'll meet with you, they'll talk to you to see how we can make this program work, not just for the school and the logistics of it, but so we can ensure that our students are getting a better product. Any program that wants to be a part of our hot supper program, they need to have 75 students enrolled. So enrolled means you can have three programs, 25 each, 25 students in each enrolled, and they can operate Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and those 75 students can come through the line every one of those days and get a hot meal. Now, what we do ask coordinators to do is fill out the paperwork. So there's a program request form and a roster. That's all they have to fill out, and they turn that into their food service supervisor. And once we process the paperwork, the program can begin because we know how many students
Alright, I wanna say thank you so much to our comms team for their presentation. We're now gonna move to community shout out, and I wanna recognize Board Member Dr. Andiful, District One, for the community shout out.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tiffany Andiful, the proud Board Member representing District One, and this evening, I have the honor of recognizing one of District One's amazing scholars and athletes. I'm proud to recognize Zion Alexander of District One's Laurel High School for an extraordinary accomplishment that was done, that was made on October 30th, 2025. Just 28 years, just 28 years, right? After the previous record was set, this exceptional young athlete shattered the school's longstanding 5K record, surpassing the previous time of 17 minutes and 33 seconds with a regional championship performance of 17 minutes and 31 seconds. Give him a round of applause. And as a former athlete myself, I was certainly not a cross-country star. I can't run a 5K, certainly not in that time. So that is a huge accomplishment, and to break a record, of course, is amazing. This historic achievement stands as a testament to perseverance, hard work, and athletic excellence right here in our county, and I'm sure you all know we have much more of it. Congratulations, Zion, believe you also go by Zeus, on breaking a 28-year record and bringing pride to not only Laurel High School, but District One and all of Prince George's County. Let's welcome Zion. Zion, you can come on up, we have a plaque to offer you. Come forward.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the Chair's Report. They serve as a vital bridge between the Board and our community. These professionals represent the Board at community meetings, committees, and task groups, and play an essential role in ensuring that our constituent services are timely, responsive, and effective. So our first person up for this evening is Bernard Keen Jr. Mr. Keen is a graduate of Radford University and George Mason University. His professional experience includes serving as Assistant Dean at Howard University Middle School of Mathematics and Science, and as a Program Analyst and Logistics Specialist at the U.S. Department of State. We also celebrate with him as he marks 11 years cancer-free this year. Next up is Jenna E. Johnson. Ms. Johnson is a graduate of Central State University and the University of Phoenix. She brings extensive experience in marketing and event strategy, having served as Global Marketing and Event Manager at Discover Global Network, and as HR Talent and Event Strategist at Discover Financial Services. A fun fact about Ms. Johnson is that she shares her home with her dog, named Birthday. And last, but certainly not least, is Mr. Ryan, aka Mac McElroy. Mr. McElroy is a graduate of Louisiana State University and Georgetown University. He has served with Mission Square, a nonprofit organization, and brings a strong background in community engagement and service. An avid traveler, he has visited 15 countries and counting. So please join me and the Board in extending a warm welcome to our new community liaisons as they begin their important work on behalf of the Board and the residents of Prince George's In addition to all of that, the Board of Education hosts a series of events throughout the year to engage, inform, and celebrate with our community. So we'd like to take it this time to encourage everyone to attend our upcoming December events. They're a great, great way to connect and stay involved. We also invite you to subscribe to the Board Members' Newsletter so you can never miss an event or an important update. Sign-up links and instructions can be found on the Board's webpage. At this time, I'd like to call for a moment of silence as we honor the memory of the following PGCPs staff, family, and community members. Ms. Dorothy Jones, mother of Eric Jones, Electrist in Building Services Electronic Shop. Okay. The Board informs the public of the following upcoming meetings. Please turn your attention to the screen for the list of meetings. November 18th of 2025 Disability Issues Advisory Board, which will be a virtual Zoom meeting, and it has been canceled. Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee, which is gonna be a virtual meeting from 4:30 to 5:00 PM. And the next business meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, Monday, not Thursday, December 1st, 2025, at the Sasser Administration Building in the Board Room, beginning at 5:30 PM, and then, as normal, it'll be open for the public at 7:00 PM. This meeting will also serve as the Board's annual meeting. So please continue to check the Board webpage for updates and more information. Okay, so now, what you've probably all come here for in our audience, I'd like to recognize the registered speakers for their public comments. To our registered speakers, you are allotted three minutes to share your remarks. Speaking time may not be transferred to another individual. The Board will not engage in dialogue during this portion of the meeting. Speakers are expected to refrain from using profanity or derogatory language. A warning will be issued once. Continued misconduct may result in the speaker being muted or removed from the meeting. To support a professional and courteous environment, speakers are encouraged to refer to individuals by their titles such as Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, or Principal, rather than by name. This evening, the Board received six public comment requests from individuals who wished to speak in person. There was no written comments or prerecorded videos. And I'd like to encourage you all, that anyone who was unable to speak, to submit their comments in writing to testimony@pgcp.org. Again, the email address is testimony@pgcp.org. Our first public commenter for this evening is gonna be Mr. Timothy Meyer, Individual, PGCPs Leadership on Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you all very much. I'm honored to be here tonight to join you to celebrate PGCPs at our best, and thankful for your leadership on Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. Tomorrow is the 65th anniversary of Ruby's historic steps, and her story is just as important as it was back in 1960. Ruby Bridges didn't set out to become a civil rights hero. She was a little girl who just wanted to go to school, strong and courageous enough to face down constant threats, for the promise only education can deliver. Mistreated for no reason other than the color of her skin, made to feel unwelcome. 65 years later, doesn't Ruby's story sound a little too familiar today? This is Maryland's moment, and tonight, PGCPs leads. One of my favorite facts about Ruby, despite all the challenges that she faced, she didn't miss a single day of school that first year. Perfect attendance. Her story is also part of Maryland's story, an important continuation of Thurgood Marshall's legacy on Brown v. Board of Education to make quality equal education available to all, so every student feels welcome. Many of you know about efforts to pass Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in Annapolis. Last session, we got 130 votes in the House. This time, I will personally lobby all 47 Senate offices, if that's what it takes, because I've seen how much this event matters. It brings communities together, and it helps raise awareness of school pedestrian safety at almost no cost. Our two local schools, Mount Rainier Elementary and Thomas Stone, have used events like Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day to make observations and collect walkability data. We use that work to partner with our city on a citywide Safe Streets Study, which helped lead to $9.7 million in federal Safe Streets funding. Events like Ruby Bridges Day can and will save lives. That's why Board Member Boozer Struther and I made sure that Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day was one of the 18 official recommendations from the County's School Pedestrian Safety Work Group. It also promotes walkability and sustainable transportation that's vital to our Climate Change Action Plan. I know that not every PGCPs school is traditionally walkable, but this event can be easily adapted, and the educational parts of the day would benefit any school community. Tomorrow, PGCPs walks for Ruby, a courageous, resilient, and heroic young girl whose small steps had a measurable impact, and we invite every family to join us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next, we have Colby Cruz, Individual, Electrical School Bus in Prince George's County.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Colby Cruz, and I'm a student living in Blainsburg. I go to Blainsburg High School and have brothers going to Kenmore and two other brothers going to Blainsburg Elementary. I see many school buses pass regularly around my area, and my brother's a bus rider as well. I have been affected by asthma, and I always have the worry of it coming back. When I was younger, I had gotten a really bad asthma attack, which had taken me to the hospital. I remember being really sick and vomiting a lot. But thankfully, I've gotten better, and I always have to take care of myself since asthma's never really gone. It's more like in a dormant stage, and it could come back at any point of my life. Every time I go to the doctor, I always get asked about my asthma, and I always get prescribed inhalers as a precaution. I'm worried that one of my siblings or anybody else will have to go through the same thing. People shouldn't have to worry that the air they're breathing in can harm them. It's really important to me, and for everybody's health, that we make a change of diesel school buses to electric school buses. And I also have a question. What is the status of the $2.5 million MEA grant to expand the ESV and charger network? And what are the ESV-related awards under implementation status? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cruz. Next up is Cassandra De Leon Cabrera, Individual, Electrical School Bus in Prince George's County.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Cassandra De Leon Cabrera, and I'm a proud Prince George resident. I attend to High Point High School District One. I'm represented by Tiff Ordorff. I stand before you as a concerned member of this community. I am deeply worried about the air we breathe, and its impact on our health. Air pollution isn't just an abstract environmental issue, it is a real threat that disproportionately affects our vulnerable residents, like our children, the elderly, and the people with pre-existing health conditions. Every day, they face consequences of air pollution, from increased asthma attacks to long-term health damage. Sources like diesel buses contribute significantly to this problem, releasing harmful pollution into our neighborhood and schools. We have the responsibility to protect our community from these dangers by advocating for cleaner transportation options like electric buses and stricter air quality regulations. We can take meaningful steps towards a healthier environment for all. Investing in clean air isn't just an expense, but an investment in our future. Diesel buses pollution harms our health, especially for kids and seniors, causing health issues. We need electric buses and stronger regulations for cleaner air, ensuring a healthier community for everyone. My question to you is, do you have the specific plan for the transition diesel buses to electric buses? Thank you for your time and listening to this issue.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cabrera. Next is Maria Guardardo, Individual, Electrical School Bus in Prince George's County.
Hi, how are you? We had a translator for her?
I'm sorry.
Somebody can translate to her?
Oh, yes, we should have a translator. Yep, right there.
Thank you.
She's gonna read everything in Spanish first, and I'll just read it in English afterwards.
Buenas tardes, representantes de la junta de educación.
Good afternoon, representatives of the Board of Education.
Mi nombre es María Guardado, residente de Hydesville.
My name is María Guardado, resident of Hydesville.
Y líder comunitaria de Chispa Maryland.
And community leader with Chispa Maryland.
Me involucré en esta lucha ambiental por mis hijos y por la iglesia y por la comunidad.
I involve myself in this environmental battle for my children, for the church, and for the community.
En todo este tiempo he estado en muchas acciones, actividades, y en todas esas luchas.
And during all this time, I have been in various actions, activities, and these different obstacles.
A veces recurría a la señora Pamela, representante del distrito de educación.
Many times, I would go to Ms. Pamela, Representative of the District of Education.
A la que le agradezco porque siempre responde, ayuda, y resuelve mis peticiones pro a la comunidad.
For which I am very thankful. I appreciate her for always responding, helping and resolving my petitions pro towards the community, or pro-community.
Chispa Maryland es un programa que conozco desde hace más de una década, y me involucré porque es un buen medio ambiente.
Chispa Maryland is a program of which I knew for more than a decade, and I got involved because it's a good environment.
Es el que nos da la vida sana y saludable. Hoy en día estoy acá pidiendo que por favor sigan luchando por adquirir más buses eléctricos.
Since the environment is what gives us life, healthy life, and makes us live in a healthy way. Today, I am here asking you to please keep fighting to get more electrical buses in
Escolares en Prince George's Country, porque 21 buses no es suficiente para una buena salud en nuestros niños.
Because 21 buses isn't enough to give good health, or give good health for our children.
Yo como madre líder comunitaria me involucré y lucho porque los jóvenes se sumen a este tipo de actividades.
And me, as a mother and a community leader, I have involved and fought so that the youth could also join in these types of activities.
Educativas y ser represente para un mejor futuro.
Or educational activities, and that they could prepare themselves for a better future.
Parte de este éxito es un ser humano, es la salud. Por eso, para mí es súper importante cambiar los buses de diesel por buses eléctricos.
And part of being a human is health, which is why it is very important to me to change the buses from diesel to electric buses.
Y así evitemos más niños con enfermedades como el asma que perjudica tanto lo físico como lo académico.
And that way, we can avoid children having such diseases or sicknesses such as asthma, which could put their physical and academic in danger.
Y gracias por permitirme estar aquí frente a ustedes, les agradezco por su tiempo y por escucharme.
And thank you for allowing me the time to be here. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to me.
Alright, thank you so much, Ms. Guardardo. Next, we have Angeline Diaz, Individual, Electrical School Bus in Prince George's County.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Angeline Diaz, a student living in Riverdale Park. I attend Blainsburg High School, and I am present here today because I truly care about our people and the people because I truly care about our people and the people who live within it. My family has been affected by asthma esp- my young especially my younger brothers who have spent more most of his time outdoors with his friends. The area that we live in is a route that school buses have passed constantly every morning and evening daily. These diesel school buses cause the air quality to be worse worse. My younger brother had developed asthma which deeply affected him. He was then restricted on how uh much time he could spend outside and had to stop one of his favorite activities, which was soccer. I then witnessed how much this change in his lifestyle and hobbies affected him physically and mentally. I apologize. I recognize and also feel for other kids who have also been affected by asthma. This is why I would like for you to thank you for the progress that has already been started with twenty-five electric school buses. And although this is a start, there are still many kids who are still constantly being affected by diesel buses, including me, who I ride school buses every morning and after school um transportation home and to my sports competitions. Um overall, I highly believe that every student in Prince George's County deserves to have electric school buses that can benefit them and their environment. I would also like to follow up with the goals of the P G C P S Climate Change Action Plan. Do the members of the Board of Education of Prince George's County think that by 2030, more than half of the diesel buses in P G C P S will have more transition to electric school buses and will be actively working and picking up students? I would like to thank all of you today for your time and attention. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Diaz. And finally, we have Ms. Marina Zelaya, individual electrical school bus in Prince George's County.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, board member, for the time. Thank you, Pamela, for coordinating the translate for Maria. Appreciate it. My name is Marina Zelaya. I am the community community organization manager from Chispa Maryland, a program of Maryland Leave of Conservation Board Education Fund. Our Chispa program work with Latino communities to ensure to we have the strong voice to protect our environmental health and families. We work close with the student and parent to share the tools and resources to protect their health and the environment. One of the case of and for focus on improve air quality and public health by reducing pollution from diesel school buses. In Prince George County, most of the school buses that transportation our children each day is still running on diesel, releasing harmful emission that danger their lawn was said asthma rates. We support the school district climate change action plan and it is goal of electrification all the school district buses by 2040. Through of clean buses for healthy news campaign, we are advocating for this trans- trans- transition because every children deserve to breath clean air and they on their way and for school. While propane propane buses are often market of clean, they are released released toxic emission, the pollution air and endorsing children. Specific task with asthma, they are also keep under the pain of fossil uh on fossil. Delaying real progress toward is truly clean, zero emission on the future. This transition to zero emission electric school buses fleet require longer planning and dedication re- resource. For this reason, we are here today for us to the board commission on this transport transition and take the necessary step to ensure for the G P G C P S achieve the full electrical fu- bus fleet by 2040. The board can protect the children health, improve our environment in the most really religion and clean transportation and environment just. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good night.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Zelaya. And I want to thank all of our public commenters for your participation and input this evening. Now I'd like to recognize Dr. Joseph uh for the superintendent's report, which is an update on dual enrollment and a spotlight on uh director.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs and members of the board and community. I want to pause tonight and recognize an extraordinary accomplishment within our district. Our Director of Transportation, Mr. Kiba Baldwin, was recently named the 2025 National Transportation Director of the Year by School Transportation News. Now that's an honor and it speaks volumes about the progress we've made as a school system. Transportation has always been one of our biggest challenges in Prince George's County. Moving more than eighty-five thousand students each day on nearly one thousand two hundred buses requires an enormous amount of coordination and care. Under Mr. Baldwin's leadership, we've moved from constant crisis management to intentional progress built on planning, transparency, and collaboration. This includes the transition to a more efficient and accurate routing system supported by a new parent app, reducing bell time imbalances from four hundred and thirty-two to sixty-nine, eliminating more than three thousand bus stops to improve efficiency and shorten ride times, and increasing trip utilization from five point three to six point three trips per bus. Since joining P G C P S, Mr. Baldwin improved on-time performance by standardizing school start and end times to simplifying routes and creating an opt-out system so buses serve families who truly need them. Another reason for this national recognition is his focus on clear, timely communication with families and schools. His team expanded customer service support and rebuilt trust through transparency. Issues are resolved more quickly and issues are investigated more timely to provide accurate information. What makes this award so meaningful is that it's not just about one person. It's about a department and a community determined to get better every day. As I often say, greatness isn't accidental. It's built through preparation, resilience, and purpose. Transportation in Prince George's County has come a long way. We're not perfect, but we're certainly better. And that's what this recognition represents: progress, accountability, and continuous improvement. So tonight, on behalf of the entire district, I want to congratulate Director Baldwin and the transportation team for this well-deserved national honor. Thank you for sho- Uh Mr. Baldwin, thank you for showing us what strongly like and for moving our system forward one bus route at a time. Again, thank you. Thank you. Next, we'd like to give an update on dual enrollment. Recognizing the profound impact of early college experiences, the expansion of dual enrollment into every high school dramatically increases students' access to high-quality tuition-free college work. To enhance this opportunity for our students, the team has collaborated with various stakeholders to facilitate access in all high schools. Currently, half of our students eligible for dual enrollment participate in the opportunity. When a student enrolls in college courses, they are successful. Over ninety percent of students receive a passing grade which can shorten their time and cost for degree completion. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Olivia Pearson, College Readiness Supervisor, to provide updates on P G C P S's dual enrollment program and partnerships.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Joseph. Um good evening, board and visitors to P G C P S. As Dr. Joseph stated, I am Dr. Olivia Pearson and I supervise college readiness for P G C P S. I have a presentation. There it is. And so again, I'm excited to share our update as it relates to dual enrollment expansion as dual enrollment is a post-college and career readiness pathway for our students through pillar three of the blueprint. As you can see, we are on track for at least nine schools to potentially offer dual in the school this school year. Dual in the school is where our teachers are vetted as adjunct professors with Prince George's Community College. These courses are taught during the school day for our students. We currently have over a hundred and fifteen teachers as of today interested at each one of our comprehensive high schools. As Dr. Joseph stated, each year about fifty percent of our students are participating in the opportunity, which leaves about three thousand students across our district who may be interested but are not able to participate for various reasons. Having this dual enrollment in their high schools will provide the access to rigorous college courses that our students desire. And our students are amazing. And so as you can see, we have ninety-plus percent of our students are doing well receiving those college credits. To be eligible for dual enrollment, currently our students must have an unweighted two point six GPA. And the chart shown here depicts the number of eligible students compared to the students that are duly enrolled in college courses. The highlighted schools are schools that have dual in the school already. So we already have teachers teaching the courses. We also have programs that are highlighted in TEAL that are tracking students towards a college degree. So as part of their high school program of study, they are tracking to an associate degree currently in our schools. This expansion, we are utilizing a three-pronged approach. That approach is working with principals, district leadership, educating everyone on dual enrollment and our shifts. We are working with our teachers. What we found is we have an amazing workforce. A lot of our teachers are already teaching these college courses. They can be working with various institutions. Some of them are already working in the evenings at our colleges. And students and families. We are working with our families so they know the eligibility requirements, what they possibly can take, and how to take those courses. One of the highlights for me is we onboarded Parkdale High School as a dual in the school school this year. And uh we planned to do it in the spring, but the school community um really was excited about it, so we were able to do it this fall. One of the students came up to us and said they wanted to change from a half-day schedule. It was a senior. She wanted to change from a half-day schedule. She wanted to stay in school all day because that college course was the last period of the day. And she wanted to stay so she could take advantage of that opportunity. And to it it was amazing and I think really hopeful and the desire as we are expanding into each one of our high schools, students are able to see the opportunity for them and it's accessible. Next week, we have a press release, press conference at Crossland High School on dual in the school um as a joint venture with Prince George's Community College and our county government. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Pearson. Uh board members, do you have any questions? Uh first, Board Member Olivo.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Briggs. Um thank you, Dr. Pearson. Uh some people may know that I served on the Prince George's Community College Board of Trustees for eleven years um before joining this board, so I cannot even express my excitement over this update. Um I I wondered if you could possibly share with the board an update of the um the dual enrollment S Y twenty-five chart because it sounds like if you've added Parkdale, maybe you've added some other schools. I'd love to know that the the schools that have dual in the school um that have been added or or maybe that that are planned to be added, just to understand that a little bit better. Um and I I just really want to commend um you and your team on this work. I think it's um it's really impressive. Um we have so many students graduating with with college credits already. And um I'll just put in a further plug for the Prince George's Promise Scholarship. I'm hopeful that all of our dual enrollment students know that they can get their associate's degree for free if they continue on at um Prince George's Community College um as full-time college after graduating. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Um so to answer your question, um so currently, Parkdale, we onboarded early. We currently have programs at Gwen Park, Duval, Friendly, Saratsville, and I may be missing one, my apologies. But um we are in the process of vetting the additional teachers. And so Parkdale, we were able to uplift early because that professor was already teaching. And so right now, we have such an overwhelming response for the teachers that um we are in the process of vetting the additional schools. And so we are um working intently with Fairmont Heights. High School, we just got, there was a teacher that just got um approved uh this week at Fairmont Heights. We also are working with Wise, um Flowers, and so those are a few of the schools that we're hoping to see this year. Um but we're excited uh about all the potential and the excitement that this is bringing for the teachers and the staff. So folks are are excited to add that feather to their cap.
And we can provide you with the updated chart.
All right, thank you so much. Uh Board Member Boozer Struther.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate this chart. Um this is a significant measurement for pillar three of the blueprint for Maryland's future and one of the significant budget lines and why we need to continue um to receive the promised funding laid out in the blueprint and what we're fighting for. Um I think we really see the percent the percentages around the equity issues. So when we look at this, I think the these numbers really tell the story of of where we're headed, that we're committed. You know, if we look at one of these high schools, if they have seventy-two students but three hundred and seventy-three are eligible, that what what we're doing is we're we're going, those numbers are going to change dramatically over the coming years. And so this baseline, I think, is really the beginning of that story of success and the other piece that I um I just recently understood this and I'm going to mention it, that I didn't understand that the the Maryland report card in the high school where it said diverse curriculum, which our high schools could offer you just about anything you'd ever want to learn. So I thought, why are these numbers so low? Well, it turns out they're only counting like dual enrollment and specialty and V P A and some things, other other access, um which brings down the score of a high school. So it it's actually like really, really, the equity issues are just circular. So I I'm excited about this. I'm as a board member, I'm looking at the schools that I represent and will do my best to market to families to take advantage of this year over year and to help their students enroll. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Board Member Boozer Struther. Um Dr. Andrew.
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much for the presentation. Um I just have some curiosities around the the schools where we currently have dual in the school. Um so I can't help but notice Duval, which is um in my district. Um and I see that um Duval has the highest percentage of students enroll, um given those who are eligible. So I'm just wondering if there's anything you can attribute that to. Is it that, you know, I actually don't know when they started in each school? So I don't know if that's a result of them starting at a different time than others, but can you speak to what we've seen thus far and what's contributing to um the large number of students enroll?
Absolutely. Um Duval uh was one of our first schools that we onboarded when we started dual in the school. And the school community, the administration, everyone has been on board and the teachers are amazing. And so um the professor that we have at Duval teaches both English in the fall and she teaches sociology in the spring. And so she's able to keep those students with her so they are able to get six college credits and we have run as many as three fall and three spring sessions of those courses.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, uh student member of the board, Ari.
Thank you so much for this wonderful update. Um I feel like a lot of students share the same sentiments that we do. Um you know, bringing it this into the schools because it saves them on transportation, both them and their parents. But I do want to ask, what are some of the um classes or the courses for dual enrollment that is being provided inside of the schools? Like which ones are the famous ones? I know you just mentioned English and also sociology, but what other ones?
So the other ones include um statistics. So we've offered statistics, philosophy, criminal justice. Uh Parkdale this spring is going to be offering paralegal, which we're also really excited about. about. And I can follow up. If, I may be forgetting some of them, my apologies, but I can follow up with the list. But those are the high flyers that we have right now.
Okay. And then, I do want to follow up with my previous question. How are the courses selected? So, like, do students suggest that they are interested in taking these classes, and then they gather more students who would also be interested in taking it with them?
That's a great question. And so, the first thing we do is we have to survey the staff to see who's eligible to be a professor. And then, once we get that, then we're able to garner student support. We do have principals who say, you know, I have a lot of students who want English ten-ten. That is our number-one most requested course. And they will, in the hiring process, we have principals who have gone through and vetted their applicants to see who could potentially teach that English course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Board Member Goines McCanns.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. I just had a quick follow-up question. In terms of our two student board members' question, what are those requirements exactly? So, if a teacher is saying, hey, I love this program, how do they know that they are eligible to apply for this?
Absolutely. And so, Prince George's Community College really vets our teachers. A Step One is a master's degree in content. If it's not directly in the content they want to teach, it's a master's degree with eighteen credits in that content. From there, the teachers can go to like the next step because the way the college is accredited, each department may have a specific nuance that they have to offer the course. I always give the example, I was a science teacher, so I'll give a science example. If I am a science teacher and my master's degree is in science ed, Step One, I have a master's degree. And then, it's a deeper dive as it relates to, in that master's degree, do I have at least eighteen credits of course-science courses so that I can teach science at the collegiate level?
And then, my second part of that question, I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, but in terms of scheduling support for our schools, our schools' principals and schedulers, how are they supported in making sure that this is a part of, that these courses and these teachers work with their master schedules? And I guess, to be specific, like, if that is the ask, how has that been, how are they then supported to make sure that that is actually able to be offered to our students?
And that's the multi-pronged approach that we were speaking of. And so, initially, we worked with the principals, and then, my team and I have, we go out to the schools. And so, we have virtual meetings with principals, we've gone out to faculty meetings, and then we follow up with them every step of the way to offer the support as it relates to, you know, what's offered, how does this fit in your master's schedule, can this fit in your master's schedule, and how to move forward.
All right. Thank you so much. I guess I'll just have a last question to wrap because I don't see any other questions. But I was just curious if you could speak to the kind of economic impact that this can have on students' lives. I know you, I'm sure you're probably just very passionate about this, and I don't want it to be lost that like dual enrollment really does support particularly or probably our most challenged learners with like giving them opportunities that can advance them in a lot of ways, and it can have an economic impact. Can you just speak to any of that?
Absolutely. So, taking dual enrollment courses shortens a student's time to degree. And so, the earlier they start, they're able to finish. And at some of our colleges, it can be five-hundred dollars per credit hour. You multiply that by three, that's fifteen-hundred dollars per course when they go to their four-year institution. And some of our students graduate early. Whenever I speak about dual enrollment, people come up to me to talk about, my child graduated a year early, a semester early. And when you talk about the room and board and housing, that adds up to tens of thousands of dollars per family. And so, I'm excited to be able to facilitate that. It's great news. And I can go on and on as it relates to the research and how research supports that students that take dual enrollment in high school are more likely to matriculate to a four-year institution and complete in time.
Yeah. And I just want to say thank you for the work because I feel like that's, you know, a huge selling point for our district and the work that you're leading, of course, but I think also just the benefits of being in our school system, perhaps in comparison to other counties. And I don't have to speak to all the great things that I'm sure you're leading and that you can continue to speak to. So, just thank you so much for that. And seeing no other questions, I want to thank you, Dr. Pearson, for the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Joseph. And I want to move to committee reports. And I'll start by acknowledging myself, which I also serve in the capacity as Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee. So, the Academic Achievement Committee is committed to enhancing academic excellence through collaboration, accountability, and informed practices. The committee meets monthly on Mondays at 5:30 PM and is charged with reviewing, monitoring, and recommending policies and practices that promote high levels of student achievement across all schools. The committee membership is as follows. Myself, Committee Chair, District Two, Board Member; Ms. Pamela Boozer Struthers, Committee Vice Chair, District Three, Board Member; Ms. Akia Goines McCanns, District Eight, Board Member; Ms. Amy Olivo, District Four, Board Member; Ms. Ariola Ajayi, I'm going to get this right, I'm going to get this right, Ms. Ariola Ajayi, but you can correct me when I, go ahead.
Ariola Ajayi.
Ajayi, okay. I'm going to get that right. Student Member of the Board at Large, Mr. Brandon Jackson, ex-officio, Chair of the Board of Education in District Six, Board Member; and then, Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer and Interim Superintendent Designee. Per Board Policy 8100, the Academic Achievement Committee is charged with responsibilities that define its ongoing purpose and role in supporting student achievement, which include reviewing and monitoring academic programs and student outcomes, ensuring alignment of instructional priorities with the board's goals for student success, evaluating data and initiatives related to student achievement, equity, and access, making policy and program recommendations to the full board, promoting collaboration between stakeholders to enhance academic excellence. This year, the committee is firmly committed to advancing its charge through the Academic Achievement Committee Work Plan for 2025-2026, ensuring accountability, collaboration, and measurable progress in support of student achievement. On behalf of the committee, I want to say thank you for your continued support, whether that's viewing or providing public comment. I now want to, if there is no objection, the board shall accept the committee's report and recommendations for this school year. Okay? There may be no objection. I'm going to move to the Policy and Governance Committee report, and I want to acknowledge or recognize Board Member Olivo, Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, to present the committee's report.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Briggs. The policy, the following board policies are ready for public comment and will be available on the pgcps.org website. One, Policy 0104, Title IX, 2024 Amendments to U.S. DOE Regulations. Two, Policy 8103, Participation in Meetings Electronically. Three, Policy 8265, Evaluating the Superintendent of Schools. In accordance with Board Policy 8101, Policy Development, the following policies are for board consideration slash enactment. This will be a two-part motion. Policy for Update Based on Our Legal Counsel. I move that the following language be added to the applicability slash definition section of Policy 4126, Employee Use of Social Media and Personal Electronic Devices. Quote, "For the avoidance of doubt, this policy does not apply to the student member of the Board of Education. The student member's conduct is governed by Board Policy 0126, Code of Conduct for Board Members, and Board Policy 0107, Code of Ethics." Is there a second to this motion? We don't need a second? Okay. Then, can you call the roll, vote, Ms. Woodridge?
I think, actually, I think it's just, if there is no objection, the board shall accept the recommendation to revise Policy 4126 to include the following language in the applicable definition section. For the avoidance of doubt, this policy does not apply to the student member of the Board of Education. The student member's conduct is governed by Board Policy 0126, Code of Conduct for Board Members, and Board Policy 0107, Code of Ethics. Okay? No objections?
Okay. Thank you. Policies Recommended for Enactment. One, Policy 4126, Employee Use of Social Media and Personal Electronic Devices. Two, Policy 3000, Business. Three, Policy 5011, Home and Hospital Teaching. Four, Policy 9354, Board Members' Vouchered Reimbursement of Expenses. New Policy Number 8103. Policies Recommended for Recision. One, Recision of Policy 1114, Newspaper Advertising. Two, Recision of Policy 1116, Information Packet. Three, Recision of Policy 2483.1, Notification of Board of Education Policies. Four, Recision of Policy 5110.4, Sibling Enrollment. Five, Recision of Policy 8350, Numbering and Indexing of Board Actions. Six, Recision of Policy 9140, Citizen Advisory Committees. Thank you for your continued support and consideration of these recommendations. On behalf of the committee, I move that this report be adopted.
Thank you so much, Board Member Olivo, Vice Chair of the Committee, Olivo. If there is no objection, the board shall accept the Policy and Governance Committee's recommendations. Okay. We're going to move to the presentation. I want to recognize Dr. Joseph for the proposed FY27 budget overview. Dr. Joseph.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs and members of the board. Tonight, we enter a conversation that sits at the intersection of responsibility and resolve. As the presentation before you makes clear, we're navigating a fiscal headwind that requires discipline, clarity, and steadfast commitment to the children and families of Prince George's County. The landscape of FY25 closeout, the pressures emerging in FY26, and the constraints shaping FY27 remind us that public education, especially in communities like ours, must be stewarded with both courage and care. In this moment, our task is not merely to balance numbers, but to safeguard opportunity. We must continue to protect the instructional core, honor our commitments to staff, and ensure that every decision reflects our deeply-held belief that equity is not an aspiration but an obligation. Even in the face of uncertainty, we are choosing to act early, transparently, and collaboratively so that our schools remain stable, our expectations remain high, and our students continue to grow. To guide us through this critical update, I'm pleased to introduce our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Lisa Howell. Ms. Howell and her team have worked meticulously to analyze the data, identify risks, and outline a path forward that holds fast our priorities, priorities including special education, multilingual learners, reading and mathematics, and the urgent work to reduce chronic absenteeism. Ms. Howell will walk the board through the fiscal realities we face, the strategies already underway to mitigate spending, and the framework for the systemic budget reset that will shape our work in FY27 and beyond. Board members, thank you for your leadership and partnership during this season of difficult choices. With that, I'll now turn the presentation over to Chief Howell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members, family members, family, and our community stakeholders as Here we have an overview of our closeout for fiscal year 2025. As we close out the fiscal year, ninety-eight-point-six percent of our revenue that was projected for the year was actually realized, with ninety-seven-point-eight of the budgeted expenditures were actually incurred. The difference between what we planned and what was executed is primarily tied to our multi-year grants, with those funds carrying over to the next fiscal year. So, that's what you see on the first two rows there, the revenue and the expenditures. On the last row is a review of our fund balance and where we ended at the end of fiscal year 2025. We had a planned spend-down that was reflected in our 25 budget. We started with around three-hundred-and-seventy-four million dollars, and we ended the year at around two-hundred-and-seventeen million dollars. The decrease that we saw from '24 to '25 of forty-two percent resulted in an ending fund balance of around two-hundred-and-seventeen million dollars. Our fund balance is our savings account essentially, is what we use as our reserve. It's primarily set aside for one-time expenditures. Over the last several years throughout our budget development, there was an intentional planned spend-down to help support our transition from where we were in 2022 as we continued with the implementation of Blueprint, and our funding was expected to increase while we were stabilizing the impact of negotiated agreements. And so, as we closed out '25, a substantial amount of that fund balance that was remaining was spent down. So, where we ended up is these three categories that you see here. The first one relates to non-spendable. Those basically represent activities that have already occurred, with the purchase of goods that are sitting in our warehouse. So, the cash has gone out the door, we can't spend those funds. The next category is our assigned fund balance of around one-hundred-and-seventy-five million. Of that amount, ninety-five is already reflected in our current '26 budget as a planned funding source for 2026. The remaining eighty million dollars has been reserved for future obligations, primarily related to uncertainty around some of our federal, local, and state challenges for the coming years. The remaining portion of the fund balance is around thirty-six million dollars. As we continue to go into our future for the rest of the '26 budget cycle and into '27, our starting point of where we end in '25 is important. So, as stated earlier, we are facing some spending pressures for fiscal year '26 as well as some fiscal risk as well. We were very successful, have been successful so far this year in our hiring activities, which has resulted in fewer vacancies, and we're really proud of that. We also have higher retention. As you know, we will, in our normal budgeting process, make an assumption around attrition and vacancy, reflecting that there will be some salary laps that results from those vacancies. The salary lapse that we planned for '26 is higher than what we're actually realizing, so that's resulting in higher costs expected for this year versus what we planned and projected. We also have additional transportation costs to ensure that we are safely transporting our youngins to and from the schools. And then, we have our rising cost of special education. And so, we do augment some of those services with contracts to support our current staffing and the cost of those ongoing services, as well as the increase in our student, with student disabilities, students with disabilities population has created a spending pressure for this year. As you know, we're funded a year in arrears, and so, our budget was developed based off of the student count the previous September, but the number of students that we are currently servicing with disabilities has increased from last year to this year. So, that is one of the reasons why we have that spending pressure there. And then, of course, we have the ongoing impact of federal uncertainty. As you know, we closed out 2025 with some uncertainty around some reimbursements for some of our federal grants, and there was also lots of discussion around what was going to happen with our entitlement grants on a going-forward basis. While some of that has stabilized for now, there's still a lot that continues to be unknown. We also have the impact of the change in some of the legislation that has impacted those families that may be eligible for Medicaid. So, while we're servicing those students who may have previously been a part of a family that was Medicaid-eligible, if that changes, we're still servicing those students, but we're not able to get reimbursed for those costs. So, that's an impact as well. And then, of course, we have our ongoing food nutrition services program, as we saw earlier today. And so, so far, we've been able to sustain throughout the government shutdown, and we have a fund balance that allows us to continue to be stable in that area. But it's still an area of concern as we move throughout the rest of 2026. So, what are we doing to mitigate the impact, some of the risks for '26? Effectively immediately, we are, we have implemented a hiring freeze of our central office positions. Furthermore, we have also cut back on some of our discretionary spend. Discretionary represents anything that's not personnel-related. That includes some of our non-local travel, conferences, registrations, catering, things of that nature. In addition to that, as we have had great success with our recruitment and our retention efforts, we don't need as much in our substitute costs, so we're looking to effectively manage those expenses, along with our overtime as well, which we expect some of those costs to come down with now positions, as positions are continuing to be filled. which we expect some of those costs to come down with now positions, as positions are continuing to be filled. We have also been working critically to engage with our families to ensure that they are taking advantage of the opportunity to continuously update their eligibility for free and reduced-priced meals to ensure that we're keeping our families supported in that area. As we also go throughout the year, we are constantly looking at the contracts in which we've obligated and where we may have flexibility on those that may provide us some opportunity to reconsider the price point associated with those contracts and the duration of those contracts as well. So as we get ready to move into 2027, we are going to continue to have our budget priorities shape and inform the resource allocation decisions that we're making. As we'll talk about in the upcoming slides, we are facing a reduction in our base budget, are resetting our budget as we move forward into 2027. These key priorities will continue to be at the forefront of those decisions that we're making. Some of the budget constraints that we are facing for next year continues to be the federal government uncertainty and the impact that that's having specifically on the state of Maryland, which is hitting hardest among the states in the tri-state area. It was just recently announced that the state is anticipating a budget deficit of one point five billion. So we know that's going to be a pressure that's going to trickle down to the local school systems. Across the board, across the state, and including PGCPs, we are also facing declining student enrollment. Particularly right now, and then the information is preliminary, which we'll talk about in a moment, for some of our targeted student groups, we're noticing a decline in some of that overall enrollment. We are projecting, or the county is projecting a deficit themselves as well for fiscal year 2027 of nearly ninety-two million dollars. So at the state level, we're facing pressures. At the county level, we're facing pressures as well. And then, as stated earlier, we will have limited use of fund balance as a funding source as we go throughout the twenty-seven budget development process. So having impacts on revenue does not lend itself well when we also are facing the rising cost of just ongoing goods and services. The cost of everything is higher. We're dealing with inflation, we are dealing with the impact of tariffs as well. So those two variables between declining revenues and increase in cost of doing business all result in budget constraints for the next year. This is our preliminary enrollment, K through twelve. And this is important because this is one of the key drivers in our revenue projections for the coming year. I have to caution, this information is preliminary and has not yet been certified. We are in the process now of preparing that certification of submitting our enrollment to the state. The top line that you see there is our overall eligible student enrollment. Eligible student enrollment is defined K through twelve for those students who have attended at least one day in the month of September and have met their immunization requirements. That count is relatively flat, as you see year over year, which is good for us. We have had great success this year in the number of students who have met their immunization requirements by September thirtieth. So that has allowed that number to be stabilized, our total eligible enrollment to be stabilized for fiscal year 2027. The orange line that you see there represents our students who are economically disadvantaged, who turn in their free and reduced-price meal forms, or they could be directly certified, which allows them to be included in that count, and we receive additional compensation for those students as well. I will caution that that number is a placeholder. The actual submission is due to MST E tomorrow, and we'll talk about it in a little bit more, a little bit more on the next slide. But right now, the assumption that we currently have in our projected revenues, which we'll get to in a moment, is tied to a flat assumption year over year, so not increasing or decreasing compared to twenty-six. The next line that you see there relates to our multilingual learners. That number is going down based off of where we were from our dashboard from the Accountability Office. And so that count is going down slightly. And then, our student with disabilities, again, this is preliminary, is also going down slightly. Once those numbers are certified, however, we'll have a better sense of what that looks like. But for now, those two student counts are going down year over year. This is our pre-K enrollment, and this count is also going down relative to the prior year. And again, this information is split. I mean, it's tentative. We don't have yet information about our different tiers for pre-K. We receive a different level of funding, depending on whether or not it's tier-one or tier-two students. But just in total, the pre-K student count is projected to go down, certified to go down. The other component that feeds into our revenue projections is the per-people amount that is outlined in the Blueprint legislation for our major state aid funding programs. This chart outlines those per-people amounts, going back to when Blueprint was first implemented in fiscal year twenty-two, to where we are right now in fiscal year 2027. So as you see on that yellow line there, it outlines the increase or decrease that we're expected to receive in the per-people funding amount for fiscal year twenty-seven. Compensatory education is the one amount, is the one PPA that is actually going down for next year. Those funding amounts, those per-people amounts are defined in legislation, so that's a known number. All the others are going up. I do want to highlight the funding amount for special education is continuing to go up, nearly fifteen percent. And then we have the amount for pre-K, which is going up substantially by almost thirty-eight percent. So now, this is the outcome of the changes in student enrollment and the changes in per-people amount, and what that yields in terms of projected revenue for next year. Again, these are preliminary, so we're not going to hang our hat and take these to the bank quite yet. We will update this as we get further along throughout the enrollment process, once we do have certified numbers. And then, of course, once the state aid is released later in January, we will then know for certainty what the revenue should look like. But an early look currently right now demonstrates an overall increase of about three, three and a half percent in our major state aid funding. That is inclusive of the Blueprint programs, which we've spoken about before. Foundation, which is the funding that we get for every student. So as we saw in that previous slide, the total eligible enrollment was flat. But the PPA was going up nearly six percent. So that is the main driver as to why the foundation revenue is going up nearly six percent is because of that PPA amount. The next line is the compensatory education. That is tied to the students that are economically disadvantaged, who turn in the farm's form. That amount is going down because that PPA, as you saw in the previous slide, is going down. And again, right now, it's based on the assumption that the enrollment is going to stay flat. ML is going down as well because of that student count going down. You'll see the increase for special education is primarily tied to that PPA amount going up, even though the enrollment was going down slightly. Comparable wage index, that is not tied specifically to enrollment, per se. It is a benchmark off of the foundation funding. But there's a component of the CWI factor that's actually going down year over year. So that's why you see that decline there. And then you see that increase in PK, in pre-K, excuse me, because of the PPA amount that we saw on the previous slide that was going up year over year, even though our projected enrollment count was going down a little bit. And then our other major state aid, that primarily includes funding that we get for our non-public. We also get transportation, and then we also receive funding for a, it's called a transition grant, but the funding is unrestricted, so it's not tied to a restricted grant program. But as we go throughout the Blueprint implementation, the amount that we get for that transition decreases year over year, and that amount is outlined in legislation. So that's why you see that decrease. So overall, net-net, that results in that increase that you see of about three point four percent. But then, when you get down to the other unrestricted funding sources, right now, we've made no, made an assumption that there will be no changes in our board funding sources. We get a really small amount for federal that's unrestricted, so no change in that either. But the use of fund balance is really, you know, the main driver here that is now offsetting that increase that we saw coming from the major state aid funding. There will be limited use right now of fund balance for next year. So overall, our total unrestricted revenue is going up only point six percent. There is some risk associated with the revenue projections that we just released, that we just reviewed, primarily related to the compensatory education. There is a change in the Blueprint legislation. That's, you know, it's been in legislation since it was enacted around the student count that is included to calculate the compensatory education funding. Previously, or currently right now, fiscal year twenty-six and earlier, the student count for compensatory education was tied to the students who turned in the farm's form. And then we also have those schools that are community eligibility provision schools. Those are schools that, based off of the poverty count, every student in that school is eligible for a free meal, so they don't have to turn in the form. So previously, or currently in twenty-six and earlier, we've been able to count every student that are in designated CEP schools to be included in that number. And then finally, we have those students who turn in the farm's form in non-CEP schools as well. And then we have those students who also are directly certified because they may be, you know, on SNAP benefits, TANF, or some of the other programs. That is our current, that's the current legislation for twenty-six and earlier. Effective in fiscal year 2027, those students in CEP schools are required to have some form to be turned in in order to be counted. That means the free and reduced-price meal form. The legislation outlined the development of an alternative form that was to be used. That form was not developed and executed by the state. And so right now, based off of the way the legislation is currently written, those students, unless they turned in a form, would not be counted. The state is obviously aware that this was not the intention that districts that have a high number of students that are in CEP schools would be substantially impacted if those students are not counted. For us, that number is projected to be around ninety million dollars. So the revenue that we saw on the previous slide assumes that we will be held harmless for that funding decrease.
You want to wrap up? I know there wasn't enough time for everything.
So just to kind of wrap this up, so as we get through the budget cycle and the governor releases his budget, we'll have an update around what direction that's going to go. And right now, the state is capturing and counting the student count under the current legislation, with the CEP schools counted and without. So they are required to collect the data by law, but they're taking into consideration the impact that it's going to have on districts if we implement, if they move forward with the legislation as it's currently written. So what is the impact on the revenue that we just reviewed? One of our largest, our largest expense for the district, for all districts, includes our impact of our employees. Right now, we've done a preliminary projection on the impact of our current negotiated agreements, and we've made an assumption for the one, which is SEIU, that we don't have a settled agreement for yet for fiscal year twenty-seven. The impact of, just the impact of the change in the negotiated agreements is estimated to be around ninety-two million dollars. That includes an assumption around COLAs, STEPS, and other compensation enhancements. So what is this all, what is all this, what does all this mean as we look at reconciling our projected revenues and our projected expenses? We know that, again, as we looked previously, our revenue is increasing only point six percent. The majority of that is Blueprint, offset by fund balance. We are on a path right now to reduce our base budget, to really reset our budget by cutting out one hundred and fifty million dollars in expenses. It's a hefty requirement that is necessary to ensure the sustained financial stability of the district on a going-forward basis. That one fifty was based off of the impacts to cover negotiations of ninety-two million that we just discussed. Reducing the salary lapse assumption, because we're doing better with our retention, so we need to bring that lapse assumption down by thirty-three million dollars. And then we have our other post-employment benefits, which is a required obligation that we make every year in our budget of fifteen million dollars. And then just the impact of fringe associated with those negotiated agreements. So all that, that's how we sort of targeted the reduction of one hundred and fifty million dollars to be able to close that gap. When you have this kind of reduction in impact on a district of our size, we're not going to get to where we need to be just by focusing on central office. This is going to be a reduction that's going to impact the district across the board, schools and offices alike. As a reminder, our total budget on the unrestricted side primarily supports our schools. Sixty-seven percent is managed by the principals. The other twenty percent is managed centrally, but it directly supports schools. That includes our academic supports, such as curriculum instruction, special education, transportation costs, all of our building, maintenance, and support, student services, safety and security, and other student support. So even though it's an essential office cost center, it directly supports schools. So the sum of the two is eighty-seven percent of our budget directly supports and benefits our schoolhouse. The other thirteen percent is our centralized services, such as finance, human resources, legal, et cetera. Some of the strategies that we're looking at to close the budget gap includes a targeted focus on eliminating vacant positions, particularly some vacant positions that have been vacant for a long period of time, and also looking at the effective use of our temporaries as well in eliminating those that are not as essential on a going-forward basis. A reduction in our discretionary spend across central offices and schools in some of the same areas that we discussed earlier, travel, non-local travel, catering, et cetera. Reduction in overtime and substitutes, program reductions or consolidations, and also looking at operating efficiencies across the board. We also want to make sure that we are maximizing the use of our grant funding to ensure that we're able to cover as much as we can that are allowable activities on our grants to take some of that pressure off of our unrestricted or our general budget. So as our next steps, as we go throughout the budget development process, we're right now in phase one, between now and December, which is to continue through this target reduction phase, identifying our path to get from where we are now to where we need to be in order to close this gap of one hundred and fifty million dollars. There'll be updates throughout this process, including today. There will be another budget update on December first, and there'll be lots of touchpoints throughout with town hall and other community engagement. Phase two is once the governor's budget is released. We will then refine our budget for 2027 as we get closer to getting that finalized. The governor's budget is expected to be released mid-January. We will update our revenue assumptions once that is released, and then we will finalize our expenditures to come up with our overall proposed budget for 2027. We then get into phase three of the budget process. There'll be a number of boardwork sessions and public hearings during phase three. Ultimately, and then we will work towards having the budget adopted and then transmit it over to the county by the end of February. Throughout this process, we will also be working on our school budgeting, which we're in the planning phase for that right now, with the development of that process to begin in January and conclude hopefully around early March. It is our commitment to our students, to our community, to our staff that we are being proactive as we approach this budgeting process. It's going to be a challenging year for sure, lots of uncertainty, lots of unknown, but we want to be positioned as best as we can to be responsive to the changing dynamics. We want to make sure that we are being, that we are engaging with our staff and our community and our stakeholders. Every step throughout the process being as transparent about decisions that are being made and what we're facing. We're going to be laser-focused on aligning every dollar that matters most to our students that aligns to our budget priorities. We're going to get through this together collectively. It will be a challenge, but we're going to navigate through these short-term pressures to put us on a long-term path of financial stability. Any questions?
All right, thank you so much, Chief Howell. Board members, are there any questions? Board Member Boozer Struther?
Hi, thank you so much, Chief Howell. A question for, I have a couple of questions, but the first one is, when the spending freeze today, are funds frozen at the school level for, for the educators who actually have assigned budgets so they could buy the supplies needed to actually instruct the children? So where there's consumable supplies like science classes or needs like instrumental music? What did, and specialty programs? What, what do educators need to start spending more money out of their pockets again? Because budgets are frozen for them to actually deliver what they're supposed to deliver this year?
Our discretionary spending cuts that we are enacting for twenty-six is primarily focused on more nonessential items, such as catering, the non-local travel, general office supplies. We did not cut instructional supplies. We tried, we wanted to stay away from those discretionary items that directly support instruction. So it was targeted, and we're working very closely- So it was targeted, and we're working very closely with our school leadership, that we are protecting the dollars that are needed to support what's happening on the educational side, but we did try to be a little bit more focused on some of the items that will stay as far away from the instruction as possible.
And when you mean non-local travel, is that specifically the employee travel? Or is that student travel?
Primarily employee travel, so that does not impact field trips, as an example, and other opportunities that may exist for students. It really is focused on staff travel.
And has every school-based leader team been given the same message about how they communicate this inside the buildings? I'm already feeling like I'm hearing inconsistencies of the understanding.
Yeah, it is, and I'll let Dr. Merle step in and speak to that a little bit as well. It has certainly been a challenge to be able to communicate the same consistent message across the board and to be able to enact this in a relatively short period of time and to have some consistency with that. So we pulled the spending back across all central offices and schools in certain areas, but we are working through an exception process to facilitate restoring those funds if it's been determined that funds were taken out that are needed for instruction or other critical matters. So I'll, Dr. Merle, can you speak to that piece?
Yes. So we'll be working with schools around any of their priorities that may have been impacted by the cuts, but as it relates to the classroom, Pam, I know you're interested in like the trips and things like that, none of that's impacted from these cuts. So if they had like a field trip plan, that's not what was cut. What was cut is like conference travel and things of that nature. But if you have, for instance, we're not touching any of that plan money, but you also will have the exception that you'll be able to put in to say, hey, we had this planned, and can we get it approved?
Okay, thank you so much. Board Member Walker?
Hey, thank you so much. One of them was around what Board Member Boozer Struther was talking about, I guess. As you continue to talk to the schools, Dr. Morrow, even a video, just so they have one clear message as to what to communicate to their teachers, because I think the variance that at least we're hearing at a high level is that they might, they being teachers, might have to go into their pockets to start buying school supplies, or we need to have drives. And if that's not the case, then let's, it'll be helpful for us to be able to communicate as well what you're seeing and what you're talking to the schools about. So thank you for that consideration. The other piece I had was, I think this is a great opportunity for us to remind parents and community members who are tuning into, you know, we need you all's help too, to get through, I think, this financial crisis that we're seeing all across Maryland, but specifically with our school system, is that our legislative session is here, and we absolutely always talk about Educate, Advocate, Act together. And so we will be, we're asking to attend the budget tell-a-town meetings, the 19th is coming up, and then we have some other ones, but it's really to have everybody's voices heard as we come together to advocate, and I just wanted to put that plug out there. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much. Student member of the board, Ari?
Okay, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I do have like two quick questions. So first is about like the specialty programs and academic offerings that you mentioned on Slide 19. Do you have like a list of specialty programs or academic offerings that are potentially going to receive a cut so that like student families and, you know, the students themselves can like be aware of it now rather than later and experiencing whatever tragic outcomes come from the budget cuts?
What I would say is as we go through this process, the board and the community will be engaged, so when we enter into those opportunities, we will have it soon enough that we will be able to make any modifications or accommodations for families.
And then my next question is about the decline that was mentioned on Slide 9. Do you know what is causing the student enrollment decline? And then what is like the plan to, I guess, make sure that it returns back to a stabilized level?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with that, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Strater if he has anything he wants to add. So the three primary areas where we had student decline was for our ML learners, and that has been impacted by what's changed in terms of our federal landscape and the newcomers coming into Prince George's County, the students being enrolled. So that has certainly been an impact that we've seen across the board in various grades. The second decline that we saw for now, it's preliminary, is based off of the count for students with disabilities. I expect that number is actually going to stabilize, be flat, or possibly increase by the time it's all said and done. So these are very early numbers, but as of the time that we pulled the information, that was showing a decline, but it's a snapshot as a point in time, and I don't think that's going to be where it finally lands. I'm not sure if Dr. White's team has an update yet, but we're still going through that certification process and finalizing those numbers. The last group relates to the pre-K students, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Strater. He can probably speak to that a little bit better about some of the assumptions that goes into the projection for that, but then what we're actually experiencing in terms of the students who actually show up in the fall.
So I can, I can speak to what we're seeing, but I can't necessarily speak to what we need to do about it. We have declining birth rates across the state, which Prince George's County is experiencing as well. So we're having fewer students being generated within that county. So in addition to fewer students immigrating to Prince George's County, we're having fewer students being born in Prince George's County. So you put those two together, and that's why we're experiencing the decline.
Board Member Goines McCants?
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you so much to Dr. Joseph and his team, as well as Chief Howe and Director Hall for being so transparent with this information and giving us what we were asking for a little bit earlier, and just giving, not just us, but the public, this level of insight into what's going on. I know last year, we had some struggles, and it was very contentious at times, but I really appreciate you being able to give us this level of detail at this point in time, between both here and our committee meetings, but sincerely appreciate that. And I think to that point, as we're looking at the way that you have to report things to Blueprint and the way that we're spending things between our central office pots of money, our school base, all of those things in between, is there, is there a way in which we are looking at these holistically in terms of how we are spending, how we are spending our money, how we are allocating money to make decisions? And I guess to put a finer point on that, how detailed are we going in analyzing, since this is a huge cut? How detailed are we going into analyzing? What is it that we're doing now? And if we've got to cut 150 million, what can we do differently? Like restructuring, like what is that looking like right now?
Yeah, so that's the process that we are in right now. We are looking at it in several different ways, not necessarily by Blueprint program or, you know, along those lines, but looking at some of our programs, but looking at where there's opportunities, where there's efficiencies in certain areas, or the way in which we operate. That's what we really want to start targeting first, because those are, that's the low-hanging fruit. So we want to kind of focus on where we know that we've got some gaps that we can close, so we're honing in on that. There's always an ongoing evaluation around what we're doing from an academic perspective, and are we getting the outcomes that we anticipate? Because it's an investment, every dollar that you have can be invested in one area or another area, and where you're going to get the most return for that dollar. And so that's also a very critical part of the conversation that we're going through as we're looking to make some of these targeted reductions. So it is a combination of looking at where there's efficiencies, looking at where we're making our investments, and looking at where there's just an opportunity to kind of close the budget gap based off of making changes in how we operate.
And if I just may make quickly add, I think this is an area of weakness for us. I do think we need a process, we can start building on it this year, but really refine going into next year, having a better system of return on investment is what you're asking here. I mean, I think we have to start looking at, you know, what are some of our big expenditures and bucket areas, and assessing, are we getting a return on the dollars that we have there? I mean, we've got to set that up. We talked about it this summer. It's just, it's a tremendous task in the time that we had, and we didn't get the structure in place to do that effectively this year. But it's something we do need to begin putting the structure in place, so as we go into the next budget season, we can be much more intentional about, about the RRI work. I mean, I think it's a, it's an issue in districts across the country, and it's definitely one here.
Okay, seeing no lights for the first round, unless any board members want to speak now? Okay, round two, Board Member Walker.
Thank you. And this last other point too is that, you know, this is to board members, that I also want to challenge us to look across our direct dollars that we manage, whether it's our board office or looking in detail to some of those, because we, you know, we have the opportunity to also help out. Now, clearly, we can't give 150 million because we don't have that directly of what we take a look at, but we do, I think that we can challenge ourselves to be a little leaner as well.
Board Member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thank you so much. I also, you know, I think we need to start talking about and highlighting unfunded mandates, and that we really need, you know, in this context, maybe we'll be heard a little better by our legislators who put these unfunded mandates on us, even though this won't have an immediate return, a stronger presence federally on IDEA, because this unfunded mandate in special education is now a billion dollars for all of Maryland's school systems, but we aren't, we aren't doing the fight, you know? So I mean, I think this is sending us some signals that we have to elevate in some of those areas, but I'm going to go to the specialty programs and academic offerings. My fear, when you talk about ROI and you look at, look at some of our high schools, we just saw it in dual enrollment, I just hope you don't use some of those numbers that we know the reason why those numbers are low. We've been waiting, we've been working hard and waiting for the support, trying to rebuild certain programs after the pandemic, which you all know that I'm very aware of, the creative and performing arts was severely impacted by pandemic. The children were actually impacted and rebuilding, so I'm asking that, that you think about that in, in your equations. Thank you.
Well, and I wanted to say, Board Member Boozer Struther, if you wanted, just really quickly, for those that are watching that might not know what you're referring to, for context, just share what you're speaking, when you said what happened in the past, and you talked about after the pandemic?
Yeah, or even, you know, if you just look at dual enrollment numbers in certain high schools, like we know, we know that the blueprint, we knew from the Corwin Commission about concentration of poverty and impacts on schools and students, and we knew the blueprint, we know that blueprint investments were getting to this pillar three, college and career readiness. And CTE, our CTE programming, dual enrollment, this coming year is sort of like when this is supposed to really blossom, right? Where we, we've been preparing and getting ready. And so we just want to make sure that because the numbers don't look good, that we don't think, well, that wasn't a good return on investment. We had a CTE program with 50 slots, but we've only had eight students in there, but we aren't looking back at the reason why we had those eight students. What were the factors? So I just want to make sure that, is, does that, am I going a little deeper?
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't want you to not say, give the context.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Oh, sorry, we're in the second round, so Board Member Goines McCants?
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. I think I wanted to add on to that statement about return on investment. I can't speak for Dr. Joseph, but just for context, and what I'm specifically asking for and what we're thinking around is not to improperly look at just numbers and, but like do a very serious statistical and statistical analysis, like are we doing deep dives into what it is that we're doing and making sure that we are getting, we are getting accurate data and information about the programs that we are offering, the way that we are structured as a district, all of the things that we're doing, not just, hey, this program is under-enrolled, maybe we shouldn't have it anymore. But also to that point, as we're looking in this, as we're looking in this very difficult fiscal climate, as we are doing all of the lobbying in Annapolis, as we are engaging our communities and talking to people, having a very serious look internally at what we are looking at, not just for the next fiscal year, but as we are going forward, what are we going to need to make sure that PGCPs can still be not just a viable school system, but that we continue to be great and greater? And what does that mean for how we are operating now as we are cutting, knowing that students are still, we've got seniors this year, we will have seniors next year? The future and what these programs could look like then won't matter for them, but it will matter for them now. Like the decisions we are making now are mattering for our youngest babies to the top, but they don't get multiple years of projections they get now. And so thinking about what we are doing now, not just our budget, like we might have to, we might have to make cuts in places that are not popular, but the idea is how can we make sure that these are minimizing harm to students and maximizing what we can do and what we can be as a district as a whole, but for individuals as well? I know that was a lot of words, but hoping that my ask is clear in terms of what are we doing and what are we looking at now?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that is definitely kind of the core of the process that we're going through now. It's not something that we're going to get through in a few weeks. It is a long process to get to a space where our priorities align with where our, where our dollars are and the decisions that we're making. And so I think, as Dr. Joseph stated earlier, you know, it is going to be a hard look at some of our data that we have that will support some of the decisions that we're making now and the impact of what that's going to be, what that will be long-term. And I think it's also part of just our ongoing monitoring of the activities, the programs that we're doing every single year, because it's not, what your decision might make today, based off of what you have today, may look very different in two or three, four years. So I think it's just an ongoing monitoring of where we're making those investments.
Okay, all right. So seeing no other questions, I want to say thank you to Dr. Joseph, thank you to Chief Howe, and the entire team for the presentation. And of course, board members, if you have other questions, you can always email them directly or add them to the tracker. So we're going to move to the consent agenda, and I want to recognize Dr. Joseph for the consent agenda items, items number 16.1 and 16.2, and 16.4 through 16.11 for board approval.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am recommending that the board approve items 16.1 through 16.2 and 16.4 through 16.11 for board approval.
Great. You want to read?
Oh, and also 16.3.
No, no, well, 16.3 was pulled, yeah. So thank you for that one. So board members, would you like to pull any of these other items for discussion under general rules? Okay, if there is no objection to consent agenda items, 16.1 and 16.2 and 16.4 through 16.11 will be adopted. There being no objection, the consent agenda item 16.1 and 16.2 and 16.4 through 16.11 are adopted. There's no unfinished business, so we'll move to item 16.3, which is now in general order as item 18.1, proclamation commemorating Ruby Bridges' Walk Day on November 14, 2025. And I want to acknowledge, I believe, Board Member Walker for this.
Good evening, everyone, again. This is so super important to me, and I'm excited that this is pulled out. You know, though I represent District 9, I'm really excited to speak even beyond District 9 today as I fully support this walk for Ruby Bridges. It's not only symbolic, but it's a commitment to who we are and who we aspire to be, particularly for our 131,000 scholars and our diverse population in Prince George's County. If you really think about it, Ruby Bridges was six years old. She was in the first grade when she was escorted by U.S. Marshals into that school. Six years old, first grade. I have a 13-year-old, and it just reminds me that, you know, my mother was one of a few who integrated in Franklin, Virginia, in her school when it was segregated. And to really be brought up in an environment where you could really talk about bravery and courage, resilience, says to me that this is something that is beyond symbolic. So I am excited to recognize that we are having an opportunity to walk in legacy. Ruby Bridges is still alive today, and to think, that feels like just yesterday, 1960. So if we have the opportunity to walk in her footsteps, engage in conversations of bravery and belonging, help our scholars of different backgrounds to recognize that this proclamation is really reinforcing our PGCPS commitment to safe, inclusive, and welcoming environments, particularly today, I think that we should be at the forefront of that. So when I see this being pulled and being able to be talked about, I'm excited to really be on the forefront with our parent, Tim Myers, with many board members around here, Pamela Boozer Struther, who's been in the front line of this as well. This honors the resilience and contributions of all of those who have paved the way. So I want to say thank you for the work that you've done. I'm excited to hold up my banner and make sure that this also comes to District Nine, where we don't have a lot of walkability, but we can also incorporate this inside of the classrooms as we talk about Ruby Bridges and, you know, the foundation that she's left for us to be able to still talk about belonging and inclusiveness. So thank you so much, and I'm in strong support of the work that we're doing.
All right. Thank you so much, board member Walker, for that thoughtful statement. There being no objections, agenda item 18.1 will be adopted? Okay. There being no objections, agenda item 8.1 is adopted. Is there any new business from board members? Okay. Seeing no new business, we're going to move to adjournment. And I want to thank you all for joining us for tonight's meeting. To our online viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further?
Board member Briggs, just out of clarity, there was a 16.3 twice. I just want to make sure that the goal book went through. There's two 16.3s. It's a 16.3 under 16, and then under 18, it was titled 16.3 also. So when you pulled, what was pulled?
Okay. I recognize Ms. Adeline.
So 16.3 was initially 16.3, but because one of the board members requested it be pulled, it moved under to 18.1. So any item moved from the consent agenda is moved down to general order.
I understand, but they're two different things. 16.3 at the top is First Amendment Goal Book, and 16.3 under 18 is proclamation commemorating Ruby Bridges Walk Day. So I want to ensure that 16.3 Goal Book is approved.
We have it at 16.4 for whatever reason. Oh, and I have it on here for my agenda.
So it looks like this agenda was printed prior to the update.
That's why we should have, that's why, what we'll do in the future is we'll just have, we'll just read all of them so that we know that they're, because I think if we would have read them, we would have caught that. So thank you for correcting us. Okay, so for those trying to delay our nine o'clock ending here, I want to say thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting. To our online viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now 8:59 PM. And the November 13, 2025 Prince George's County Board of Education Business Meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your break. Thank you so much.